Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Good morning, everyone. On behalf of Mayor Frye and on behalf of the members of the Minneapolis City Council, it's my distinct pleasure to welcome you to City Hall for the 2018 inauguration of our city leaders. At this time, I would ask everyone to please silence your phones and other noise-making devices. Our proceedings this morning will begin with an American Indian blessing ceremony that includes both prayer and song. Please welcome to the podium Doreen Day and her grandson for the opening ceremony, ritual cleansing, and the blessing for our leaders.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, relatives. To my left is my grandson, whose government name is Ruben Santos McCully. He is going to be lighting the sage to purify the surroundings in a circle here as we've gathered for the inauguration. So as he does that, if you are able to take some of that smoke in, this is a blessing of the space and preparation for the ceremony. And as Anishnabe, the original people of this land, we thank the Creator each day for the life that we have been given. We're thankful that we are able to help one another. We give thanks for the ability to live, to continue to live. So my prayer is that offering. It is also encouragement to the leaders who are going to be seated and to pray for them and their families and their lives as well. I'm going to offer a song now, and this song, I will tell you about it when we're done. Mi Gwetch. So, my relatives, that song is speaking to us for us to get up, to wake up, to look around, to see the beauty that the Creator has made for us on this beautiful creation. This song says to get up, wake up, hear that the birds are singing about this beautiful life. And I chose this song to sing today because we are in that place, in time, in our lives here, where we are getting up, where we are waking up. Where we are getting up, we are waking up. And as a collective human family, we are looking at Mother Earth, we are looking at creation, and hopefully we are thankful for all that has been given. Mi Gwetch.
Thank you for that beautiful blessing, Doreen. Well, ladies and gentlemen, I'm here to call to order the meeting for the inaugural ceremony for the city council. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, families, friends, and distinguished guests. At this time, it's my privilege to call to order the inaugural ceremony for the induction of the city's new mayor and city council. I will call upon our joint color guard to escort the party to the platform. I will now invite those who are able to please rise for the National Anthem and to remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I will welcome to the podium Alyssa Schwitzer, who will perform the National Anthem, and Ellen Wolfson and Kayla Cross, who will recite the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me now in welcoming Norman Vu to the podium for traditional Hmong ceremonial blessing to seek the grace of the spirits of the four corners of the universe, to bless the mayor and the city council with strong, honest, and just leadership, and to act with respect, dignity, and compassion in their work on behalf of the people of Minneapolis.
Good morning. This Hmong Keng song is to say, to celebrate the devout communities of Minneapolis. It gives the mayor-elect and the city council members the strength and courage to bring our devout communities together to become one vibrant city where we all live in harmony, peace, and prosperity.
Well, now I'll just take a moment to acknowledge our new mayor, Mayor Frye, and our new city council, who we're all so happy to be welcoming here. I'd also just like to take a moment to recognize some of our elected officials who have joined us here today, and I'll begin with Senator Klobuchar. If you could please stand just for a moment when we call your name. Senator Klobuchar, and people, please be seated. Sorry. Senator Klobuchar, Congressman Keith Ellison, Mayor's Melvin Carter, Mayor Chris Coleman, Representative Fu Lee, Representative Raymond Dean, Representative Diane Loeffler, Representative Ilhan Omar, Representative Frank Hornstein, Representative Paul Teason, Representative Karen Clark, Senator Scott Dibble, Senator Patricia Torres Ray, Senator Jeff Hayden, Senator Bobby Joe Champion, our Park Board member, Latricia Vita, School Board members, Kim Ellison, Carrie Jo Felder, Ira Jordan, Nelson Inez, and Hennepin County Commissioners, Peter McLaughlin, Commissioner Marion Green, Commissioner Linda Higgins, and from the Board of Estimation and Taxation, Carol Becker and David Wheeler. And if I've forgotten anyone, please take a moment to stand and I apologize. So I'd also like to offer a special thank you to all the families and guests and to the community members who have taken time out of their busy schedules and lives to celebrate the inauguration of Mayor Frye and the city council here today. My name's Sarah Walker, and I'm honored and humbled to be here to help welcome our new mayor and new city council to this important moment in the life of the city of Minneapolis. This is a new beginning. It's a fresh start, and I'm proud to be standing here with a truly representative governing body for the city and the people of Minneapolis. For too many in our city, there is a sense that we may be living in a time of darkness, a time of political turmoil, a time of racial divisiveness, in which our communities of color have lost trust in our police and our other institutions, a time of economic uncertainty in which too many cannot earn livable wages or find affordable housing, a time when our immigrant communities feel unsafe and uncertain of their futures, a time when women have felt objectified and discounted, a time in which these political divides, racial divides, economic, gender divides threaten to tear us apart. But to quote John F. Kennedy Jr., "We are not here to curse the darkness, but to light the candle that can guide us through that darkness to a sane and safe future." We find ourselves now at a critical juncture in the history of our city, a moment in which we must put the darkness behind us and light a candle that will help us find our way forward. As a woman who immigrated to this country from Zambia with her parents as a young girl and who spent her life fighting, like many of you, against inequities, I am certain that Mayor Frye and this city council are exactly the leaders we need in this moment. Leaders who can illuminate the candle and help us see one another in a new light, who can help us build new partnerships, and together can bring forward real and lasting solutions to these challenges. And with the election of Mayor Carter across the river in St. Paul, carrying a bright candle of his own, the Twin Cities are now blessed with a new generation of young, dynamic, and diverse leaders who will do much more who will do much more than curse the darkness, who will, together, lead us into the light of a new era. And with this new light, though, we must take care. We must take care not to be blinded into believing the path ahead will be easy. We must be mindful that we will inevitably stumble. Mistakes will be made, but that is part of working together and building partnerships. We must not let our candles go out now. We must not return to divisive darkness. Instead, we must learn from the past and future mistakes and maintain our forward progress. At this inauguration today, we've all come together to light a candle that Mayor Frye and our city council will use to lead us, to lead our way forward. Light a candle to find ways to unify all of us, to bridge our political divides, our racial divides, our economic divides, and our gender divides. Light a candle that will help us create strong and vibrant communities, and light a candle to lead us to that safe, sane, prosperous, and just future for every resident of the city of Minneapolis. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call upon Iman Assad Zaman to offer an invocation.
Well, the good news, Mr. Mayor, council members, the good news is that you're in charge. The bad news is that you are in charge. The Prophet Muhammad, peace be upon him, 1400 years before it became the in thing to say, said, "Sayidul Qawm Khadimuhah," the leaders of a people are their servants. I congratulate all of you for stepping forward for this service, and I remind you of the trust that you have chosen to take upon yourselves, that this people of Minneapolis have rendered upon you. God mentions in the Quran, "Inna Allah ya'murukum antuwwadul amanati illa ahliha." God commands you to render your trusts to the owners of those trusts. And further, God commands you, when you judge between people, to be just, and God reminds you that He is watching and hearing. Dear elected officials, you are now in charge. The city is built upon many successes of the past, and we look to you to build upon these successes. This city also is plagued by systemic injustice, and the people of this city look upon you to reverse those and to bring justice. Let's take a minute to make a prayer. Dear God, you have created us, and you have endowed us with this beautiful city, and you have seen fit to elect and appoint to office these wonderful people behind me. We ask you to guide them and provide them with your wisdom. We ask you to put compassion in their hearts for all of the people of this city. God, we ask you to give them the strength and the courage to reverse the decades and centuries of injustice that they will encounter. God, we ask you to give them the wisdom to build upon the successes of the past. We ask you to make them servants of the people, and we ask you to give them joy as they perform these tasks. We ask these in all your good names. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome Saseed O'Shea to the podium for the featured reading of a poem written Oops, sorry.
This morning amid the pageantry and the ceremony of these inaugural proceedings, the elected leaders of the city will subscribe their oaths of office. The oath is more than a formality, it represents all that is necessary for the foundation of a government of law, a government of, by, and for the people. The oath is a solemn vow, a promise. It binds these officials to the people of the city. It's a promise of allegiance believed to be so essential to the ideals of a representative democracy that the very first law enacted by Congress, established under our Constitution of the United States with an act to regulate the time and manner of administering oaths to all civil and military officials of this nation. That same loyalty oath, a promise, a pledge to uphold the law, now extends to all levels of government. Today, as they embark on a new four-year term, we require our chosen leaders to make that same pledge to us, that they will uphold the law, that in so doing, they themselves will observe and obey the law which empowers them to act in our behalf and which requires them to act at all times in good faith and in accordance with the limits of power we have invested in them. At this time, I'll ask all members of the city council to please raise your right hand. Do each of you, having been elected to represent the various wards of this city, now solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution and laws of the state of Minnesota, the charter and ordinances of the city of Minneapolis, and that you will, to the best of your abilities, discharge the duties provided for you as members of the city council throughout the terms of service to which you have been elected, so help you God.
I do. Congratulations to all.
And now I will invite the elected members of the Board of Estment and Taxation, Ms. Becker and Mr. Wheeler, to please join me at the podium. Do each of you, having been elected at large as members of the Minneapolis Board of Estment and Taxation, now solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution and laws of the state of Minnesota, and the charter and ordinances of the city of Minneapolis, and that you will, to the best of your abilities, discharge the duties provided for you as members of the Board of Estment and Taxation throughout the terms to which you have been elected. So help you God.
I do.
I will.
Congratulations.
And now, I'd like to welcome my friend and fellow activist, Saseed O'Shea, to the podium to read a poem she's written originally for this inaugural event. The poem encourages our new elected leadership to place a premium on equity and to always consider the interconnectedness of the community.
Good morning to you all. So here is how it's gonna happen. I will speak in Somali first, then English to explain what I say. Then I will read this poem in Somali, so bear with me. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillahirobbilalamin. Wabihin astainu ala amuridduniyah wa din. Wassalamualaikum wa ala nabina Muhammad. Damantin as-salamu alaykum wa rahmatullahi wa barakatuh. Muhimada aila da hai komunitegi inu la shaqaya en dadka madhda ayla dhorthei. En wahrin adu mihimah sabaptoha komuniti de la shaqaya dadka madhda. Wahaa ayy nasib uyaishan in ayy u istagan arrimahoda. In ayy od yaishan od kodo uyu nqdo mid kufilan ayyaga. In ayy dhorthean qofka shaxiga ayyagu ayy raban. In ayy arrimahoda amab mashari eeda don tu ugu jirto ayy kenan siriga. Ayy na nasib uyaishan in ayy helaan degaha iyo indaha dadka madhda. Merka wahaa muhimah oqofalbo oqamidah komuniti gakum mihimah. Inla yaishoh en dad iskuheran o istjail. O arrimaha idanaa wahyalaha ayyaga don tu ugu jirto. Yekana kana tirsan kana hela nasib uyaishashanaka hela dadka in dolada la shaqaya. En haday nqdo mid gudaha ayy haday nqdo mid fedra alkaaba. In ayy uyaishan awudas ayya muhimah ayy muhim utaha in ayy la shaqayan dadka elected officialska. Muhimada inu awwa halkan ujogno wahaa weyan in anu osalabreid gareino. Inu tehniyadnu udirno mayor kena gusub Jacob Fry. Iyo timki sah o haday iken mid yehin en dadka in kaladuwa noga shaydu fadiyah. Ayy nu nukula na hai shaxsi anaga naga mid awwa lal kena abdi wursameh. En wahaa muhimah inla fahmo mayor ka gusub inu yehai wil la lenyaraha. En ahh bashash chail luqadda Somali gai nu kuha allah. En barta kana min nqdo en una istago arrimaha dadka Somali da ayy ugarkaha. Wahana ino tahi sharaf iyo gul iyo gubnimo. Okay, now I will speak in English. So I'm gonna say the same thing. Why it's important for the community to work their elected officials? It's inevitable and very important for each community, particularly my community, the Somali community, to work with their elected officials. Here is the reason why it's important. By doing that, they will, they will build a better education system, find good-paying jobs, low-rent houses, clean and bigger houses, actually. Safe neighborhoods, great outdoor spaces, programs that work for the community. The reason why it's important to also work with all local and state and federal agencies, government agencies, elected officials, is very important for many reasons as well. It will give the community more unifying voice, a strong civic engagement, better understanding of how the system works. Now, the reason why we're here today is because of our elected officials who sit in behind me. Jacob Fry being one of them. And that's the reason why we're here, to congratulate Jacob Fry and his team. Jacob is a young man who love and respect the Somali community, have many great friends within the community, like Abdi Wursameh. Love the Somali culture and food and language. And it's really interesting to see him speak in the Somali language when he stands and say, "Wil adano af Somali ku hadashan ma'araktan." Who is someone who love and voted, who understands that the Somali community love him and voted for him. And I would say it's a win-win for all of us. Now, I want all of you to stand because you're gonna be chanting the poem I'm reading. So everyone, stand please. And bear with me because I think this is the first time I am reading Buram Bur onstage. So here is how it's gonna go. When I read, as I start reading, I want all of you to say, "Come on, two times." You will do that as I read this. Continue doing that. This was basically saying that it was an honor and beautiful to be standing here congratulating, congratulating our elected officials. Almost every line that I say represents a member and, including the mayor of Minneapolis. And I wanted to say thank you. Now you can sit down. This was phenomenal night, and I would say thank you so much. Somalina wabillahi tofiq. Wassalamualaikum wa rahmatullahi wa barakatuh.
Mr. Fry, would you please join me? Raise your right hand. Do you, Jacob Fry, having been elected mayor of and for the city of Minneapolis, now hereby solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution and laws of the state of Minnesota, and the charter and ordinances of the city of Minneapolis, and that you will, to the very best of your ability, discharge the duties provided for you as mayor throughout the term to which you have been elected. So help you God.
I do.
Congratulations, Mayor Fry.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Mahat Senat. Gracias. Well, good morning, Minneapolis! Assalamualaikum. Buenos dias. I thank you, everyone, for being here today, including my parents. Mom, everything I am, I am because of you. Dad, everything I aspire to be, it is because you showed me how to dream bigger. To my extraordinary and beautiful wife, Sarah. Thank you for being my love, my ever-present advocate. I love you more than anything. I also want to thank my predecessor, Mayor Betsy Hodges. Minneapolis is stronger for your focus on equity and for your 12 years of amazing public service. The city is better because of you. And to all of the candidates who ran for mayor, you've made me a better mayor through vigorous debates and ideas we exchanged over the last year. Our city benefits from your leadership. And here with us today are my incredible colleagues on the city council. And I can tell you from experience that this city council, they are forward-thinking, they are united in mentality, and they are ready to serve. I look forward to embarking on this amazing journey together. And so today, today we come together to collectively recognize that the time for talk alone is over and progress cannot be achieved without a clear, action-oriented approach. In Minneapolis, we can achieve remarkable things when we are justice-oriented and united. Take James Cross, who helped establish Natives Against Heroin to improve the lives of people in Little Earth and across the state. He's on the front lines combating the opioid epidemic by engaging the community directly. And I'll tell you what, he is saving lives. Take the North Loop Neighborhood Association. They embraced change when they worked hand-in-hand with Beacon Interfaith Housing Collaborative to build affordable housing for people with a felony record. They responded to a moral question with the right policy. They didn't simply allow new residents in their neighborhoods. They welcomed them with open arms and they said, "Yes," in our backyard. That is the spirit of Minneapolis. We have elected not one, but two trans council members of color. They made history last year. They made history last year and made Minneapolis proud by living their truths and encouraging others to do the exact same. Congratulations to them. And these are just some recent examples of how the people of Minneapolis have worked together for the betterment of their communities. That's what today is about. Coming together, uniting around a share of vision, and charting a course that quite simply improves people's lives. And if we work together, Minneapolis can be a city where every ward, every neighborhood is defined by opportunity. Our history is marked by moments proving that this is achievable. From harnessing the industrial might of the Mississippi River to emerging as the Midwest's top incubator for new businesses, to our Somali community's newly-formed Opportunity Center in Cedar Riverside, Minneapolis has seized opportunity, embraced change, and pushed for progress every step of the way. And it is that reputation that has made our city stand out as an international hub for new Americans and refugees, as a safe haven for the LGBT community, and a home for innovative businesses. It's that reputation that has made our city and region home to 17 Fortune 500 companies. But we know that it's been too long since the last Fortune 500 established its headquarters in Minneapolis, and there's a clear reason for that. Our population is becoming more diverse, communities of color are growing, but we're not knocking down the barriers to their ability to scale. This is not a symptom of our deficiencies, is the reason why our deficiencies persist. Now, we talk about access, but we know that as a region, we are excluding professionals of color and failing to utilize minority-owned businesses. So yes, we must confront today's challenges head-on, and our challenges are real. The very first challenge we are addressing head-on is expanding access to affordable housing throughout our city. We are in the midst of an affordable housing crisis. We've lost 10,000 units of affordable housing in just the last 10 years, and our city stands on a history of intentional segregation. We have maps in City Hall identifying North Minneapolis as a slum occupied by our Black and Jewish communities. It's that kind of intentional segregation that divides communities and ideas. It is that kind of intentional segregation that restrains our economic growth, prevents inclusion, and hinders the exchange of ideas necessary for our modern-day stories. We didn't get here by accident. So we can't expect to address these problems without solutions that match the precision of the harm inflicted. So I campaigned on the premise that a strong commitment to racial justice includes a strong commitment to investing in affordable housing. And we promised that affordable housing would not be limited to areas that already have high concentrations of it. Affordable housing should be in every neighborhood because everyone has the right to live in a great city. And in our great city, we don't push certain communities aside, we welcome them in. So how can we begin to make things right? Well, first, we know it is cheaper to preserve an existing unit than it is to make a new one. So we need to retain and preserve the affordable housing that exists. Second, we need to produce new affordable housing. And as we create new housing, it can't only be at 50% and 60% of area median income. We need deeply affordable housing at 30% of area median income. Too many of our neighborhood neighbors are experiencing homelessness because of lack of deeply affordable housing. There are people who don't have an opportunity to go home at night, shut the door on the world, and rejuvenate for the next day with the comfort, in one simple phrase, "I am safe in my home." All we need is the political will. Right now, a huge percentage of our homeless population is working. They are working, but they can't make up that gap between the cost of our deepest affordable housing in the city and the cost of a shelter. So we are perpetually keeping them trapped in a cycle of homelessness because we have not provided that next rung on the ladder that would allow them to pull themselves out. out. Not only is this humane and inequitable, it's also a bad financial decision. It costs three times as much to keep a person homeless on the streets, cycling through hospital-staged shelter, sometimes jail, than it does just to give them a home. Enough is enough. Let's make the commitment. If you believe that everyone deserves the safety and the security of a home, then I want you to speak up with me. Housing is a right. Housing is a right. In the richest nation the world has ever seen, in a city where cranes fill our skyline, nobody should live or under a bridge, and nobody should worry about where they'll rest their head at night. Now, say it with me: housing is a right. Housing is a right. Housing is a right. We also know that unscrupulous landlords will increase rents while putting people's health and safety at risk. We know that immigrants and refugees are disproportionately impacted, especially those that are not documented. I'm here to tell you that our collective human thriving depends on our immigrant population, just as it always has. I'm here to tell you that we must stand up for tenants in our city. If we commit to expanding affordable housing throughout our city, we will usher in an era where we finally embrace living among people that look different from ourselves, and yes, an era where all of our cities' families can thrive. So I mentioned just a moment ago that our Jewish community was intentionally segregated. That was just one chapter in a long history that led to the infamous declaration that Minneapolis was the capital of antisemitism in the United States. And today, I am proud that a Jewish man is delivering this speech as your mayor. It's not long ago I would have been redlined out and denied employment in many places. More recently, police raids of gay bars and arrests for the sake of outing people in adult bookstores were commonplace. And then six years ago, Minneapolis was at the center of a successful drive to make marriage equality state law. And I tell you this, not to celebrate how far we've come, but to show you that when we chart a shared path forward, we can achieve great things. We have high goals for improving community-police relations as well. Events of the last several years have tested our city in ways that are new to some neighborhoods but are all too familiar to others. Strained relations between law enforcement officials and the communities they serve, especially communities of color, have exacted a toll on the very soul of our city, of our region, and this nation. And as a former civil rights attorney, I know that allowing a system of racial injustice to remain in place damages our shared sense of humanity. The instinct to do right by one another suffers, the trust that holds our neighborhoods together is eroded, and it's not just the victim or the individual who pays for it, the entire Minneapolis pays. Jamar Clark's family knows this pain. Don Damon and Justine Damon's family knows this pain. Valerie Castile and Alisa Castile and Diamond Reynolds know this pain. Generations of families throughout our city's history know this pain. As your mayor, I will make damn sure that I do everything in my power to help heal that pain, strengthen police-community relations, not just through conversations, but by working with you, our law enforcement agencies, the city council, to enact policies that protect and serve the people of our city. And our law enforcement officials answer the call, day or night, regardless of the risk we need to be working directly with them to ensure that they are in the right frame of mind, have access to wellness training, and can be their best versions of self. And yes, accountability must be a priority. Accountability to the standards of the Minneapolis Police Department, the Office of Mayor, the City Council, most importantly, accountability to the community. It is that accountability that comes in the form of shifting the culture of policing, specifically use of force, should be reformed so that reasonable alternatives are used prior to resorting to deadly force. And while we have body camera policy, we know that technology is of no use to anyone unless it's turned on. And presently, far too often, those cameras are not turned on. So we should expect that an officer's body camera is activated early when responding to a call, and in cases when we find a lack of evidence, it should not be to an officer's failure to activate their body camera. And so, yes, we must expect more accountability from our police, but we also need to expect more from ourselves. Elected leaders need to be accountable as well. We need to recognize the reality that violent crime is up, especially shootings. We talk a lot about creating a culture of true community policing. And Chief Arredondo and I believe that community policing requires that our officers have the tools they need to succeed, to keep our neighborhoods safe, and to ensure that residents are treated with respect and dignity at every encounter. And right now, our police are often running from 911 call to 911 call without the time to build out those strong relationships, to get to know the small business owners and residents, to get to know the kid walking down the street in a hoodie. One way to fix that: narrowing the beats of officers and putting them on consistent times and schedules so that they can build the relationships with the community that they serve. I want you to know your officer by name. In supporting our officers and expecting reform, I am confident that we have a committed partner in Chief Arredondo. Chief, I look forward to working with you. And so we need to set the stage for community policing by strengthening our communities, and we can strengthen our communities by making sure all neighborhoods are sharing in the benefits of our growing economy. Now, I don't care what President says. In Minneapolis, we know that Black, Brown, and Indigenous people, and our new American community, makes us stronger, smarter, and more globally competitive. And while our city sits at 3% unemployment, we know that the number of unemployed and underemployed people of color continues to grow. We stand on stolen land in a city and a state with a long history of attacking and excluding Indigenous and Black communities. Yet all too often, economic inclusion and diversity are treated as buzzwords, and policies fall short of measurable progress. Too many neighborhoods have been cut off from the city's prosperity and relegated to the margins. For generations, people of color and Indigenous people have played invaluable roles in building and sustaining our city through innovation, skilled labor, and blue-collar work. They are some of the most influential thought leaders, artists, investors, and corporate executives that we have. They are, have been, and will increasingly be our Minneapolis. It's time that we embrace this reality fully. Too much, too much of our community experiences underemployment. Even while we have over 50,000 job openings in our market, not only does this mean, we have over 50,000 jobs and openings in our market, but not only does this mean that our families are not living their greatest realities, this also means that by 2040, we have left $31 billion on the table in Minneapolis-St. Paul if we do not fully embrace our entire job population. $31 billion of lost opportunity in our amazing market due to gaps between people of color and white people. Now, any smart businessperson would agree that this would be an unacceptable loss. We want and need every dollar to invest in our education system, infrastructure, and businesses so that our city is living up to its full potential as an innovative platform of prosperity for all. That is what it takes to make sure our Minneapolis is globally competitive and that every segment of our community experiences the fullness of the prosperity that has been realized by so many. This too requires political will. I am committed to ensuring that the success of Northeast and Downtown reaches every corner of our Minneapolis. And you can expect that when business leaders approach the city, they will be met with a team of city employees that will partner to move their businesses from concept to shovel. But we won't stop there. We will work with council members to design solution ward by ward, and we will partner with business leaders to ensure that the path forward builds a climate that earns investment and supports our great city. Are we gonna grow? You bet we are, and we will grow in a way that champions communities traditionally left behind. Our business community knows that the importance of growth through inclusion too. We see this through our Minneapolis. From the investments along the Plymouth Corridor in North Minneapolis, to amazing transformation along Lake Street and Chicago Avenue, to partnerships between our regional and ethnic chambers of commerce. This is what it takes. Our Minneapolis knows we must be united in action. When we succeed, we celebrate together, and at every step of the way, we innovate. Now, I'll also say, Minneapolis does not operate in a vacuum. We operate in a regional economy that drives the success of the entire state. We will collaborate with the neighboring jurisdictions, from Hennepin to Ramsey, from Bloomington to Dyna, and up to Brooklyn Center and Brooklyn Park, from Minneapolis to St. Paul. We are the Twin Cities, and I am really proud that Mayor Carter has joined us today. And speaking of Mayor Carter, you may not know this, but today is his birthday. Now, he recently told me that he's never done anything on his birthday. Literally, nothing. But he's sitting right here in the second row. That's a testament to united Twin Cities. And I think the fact that he's here deserves a little bit of a celebration. I think we should all sing him a little happy birthday song. So please, piano player, you ready up there? Everybody join me in singing a very warm Minneapolis-style "Happy Birthday" to Mr. Melvin Carter.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Mr. Carter. Happy birthday to you.
Had to embarrass you a little bit there, Mr. Mayor. So, as you heard, when we sing, we sing together; when we succeed, we succeed together; and when things get tough, you know what we do? We stay at the table. We are in this together, Minneapolis. And so, just weeks from today, the eyes of the world will turn to Minneapolis to be entertained for a few short hours during the Super Bowl. What they will see is a city united, united around the values of opportunity, inclusion, and justice. A city pushing to create a direct correlation between hard work and success, and a city of the future that is emblematic of everything that our country can become. We can be that city, and together, we are gonna make it happen. In this city council here, we have tremendous partners to meet the challenges that we face head-on. Council members who have been here for years bring a great deal of experience. Council members who are just starting out are new and innovative and are coming with a fresh set of ideas. I can't wait to work with our city council, our independent school and park boards, our state legislature, the Hennepin County government. We all, including everyone in this room, have a role to play. Let's start this work together. And so, our city stands on the cusp of breakthroughs, on making progress for so many neighborhoods. But we can only realize those breakthroughs, that progress, if we choose a united front over a house divided. If we accept that a divergence in strategy does not equate to a difference in morals, if we look to one another with the compassion that makes our neighborhoods stronger, we can reach these goals. The opportunities that lay ahead of our city demand that we make the most of them. Our shared commitment to the city we love assures that we will. Now, let's get to work, Minneapolis. The future is bright, and the future is ours. Thank you so much.
Wow, that was some performance. Thank you for that gift of music, and a special thank you for Shiloh, not only for that song, but for all the work they do in the community. Before we close this ceremony, I would just like to tell everyone that many people want to stay for the organizational meeting for the city council. Seating is very limited in City Hall, but this will be open and will be put on the screens here, so feel free to make yourself comfortable. But now, I'd like to introduce and honor and recognize and call to the podium Rabbi Marcia Zimmerman to offer the benediction.
My heart is fluttering because we're in good hands. We're in new hands. We're in old hands. And in those hands, there is great potential. It is not only the mayor, the city council, and the elected officials, but we are the partners. We... We, as citizens, are here to lend a helping hand. You are not alone. We are going to be there for you. And so, we thank you as civil servants who have taken it upon themselves, for the staff, and for the city employees who create the structure from which you all work. We can never forget those behind the scenes. It is our hope that what has happened on this podium today is what is going to happen every day, where every tradition is honored and heard and celebrated, that every language is listened to, and the wisdom that is held in each word bathes us in creating a city that is a role model for all. It is in our hands, and we are partners. So I bless those who are on this podium, and I bless you who are here and those who are not with this blessing. Blessed are you who have come, who have stood up, who have made their voices heard. May these doors of City Hall be open to all. May we not allow its threshold to make young straying and old feet stumble. May the gates of this city be open to opportunity for all. And may we shut out pettiness and pride, envy and enmity. It is in our hands. And so, I offer this blessing as we go out now to begin the work that we have spoken about today, that we roll up our sleeves and do the hard work. So when you are in joy of your successes, celebrate with us. When you feel disheartened, turn to us. And then, we bless you. May you be blessed and may you be strengthened. May you feel the grace of the community and the voices of our city. And may you feel the wholeness and oneness of peace. Amen.
Thank you, everyone. Our ceremony is now adjourned. Please feel free to stay here.